Bear with us, we're just making a few adjustments on the screens.
I'm ready, Congressman.
Yes. Alrighty. Thank you very much, folks, for coming tonight and allowing us to tweak in our technology here. With this, I'd like to go ahead and call the town council regular meeting for July 1st to order. And we'll start with the call to order.
Councillor Schinkin.
Here.
Councillor Hopper.
Here.
Councillor Gardner.
Here.
Councillor Peterson.
Present.
Councillor Nellens.
Here. With that, I'd like to ask each of you to stand for a moment of silence and then we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the new flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This brings us to our open to the public. We kindly ask that all person, public comment is limited in two minutes. There will be a total of 20 minutes allotted for the public comment section. Comments will be timed by the clerk treasurer. The council may exercise its direction, its discretion in allowing public comment to extend past 20 minutes, but it is not required to do so. Please keep your comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. In the event questions are posed to the council, we will note your questions in the meeting minutes and refer the questions to the appropriate department or staff for follow-up and response. The president, at their discretion, may ask or recognize speakers with different points of view to speak at the meeting. Public comments may also be submitted electronically. If you have a question or comment about an item on the agenda that you would like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please email the question or comment to the clerk treasurer, And with that, I will open up to the public. And we'd like to have you state your name and address. Have we put the list up yet?
We even have to resume.
Okay, alright. So, is the microphone on?
Yeah.
Here. Very good.
Right.
We're good to go.
Okay. My name's Dave Curtin. I live at 1045 Azalea Drive, street known for traffic calmer's. Currently, there are four traffic calmers in town or chicanes in town. Two of the four are in front of my home. I have one that takes up all the parking in front of my home. And then I back out of my driveway, I have another one. The chicanes are about 50 to 60 feet long and about four feet wide. Do not provide any landscaping. They are just simply a sidewalk that was put in without taking into account that they are putting these into a residential neighborhood. I spent a lot of time, my wife and I, raising our children in this home, putting our money into the home in hopes that someday we'd be able to sell our home when our children are gone. I just received a letter from a prominent realtor in town, K. Rogan, which told me that my property value will be going down as a result of these chicanes, which is horrible. I have not complained to the town one time in the 23 years I've lived in this home or lived in Munster, Indiana. I have not complained about the speed of people driving down the street. I've raised my kids, taught them how to cross the street, ways to be safe. And now we have these chicanes in our property. My neighbor has a fire hydrant, so I've lost all parking. So my people who come visit my home, I have to go a couple doors down. Questions. Were surveys done to gather data? I work in a school. I'm a associate principal of high school. When we make changes, we survey the population. We get data from the people who are the stakeholders to make sure that that's what they need. As far as I know, in this 23 years, there's never been an injury due to any of these chicanes, or I'm sorry, traffic in the area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Mike Engler, 113 Beverly Place, here in Munster. I'm here as a member of our Beverly Parkway Beautification Committee, as we call it today. We'll change our name tomorrow, but anyway, that's what we're calling it today. I'd like to give you first an update as to where we are as part of our committee. First of all, thank you for funding our landscape architect that we'll be working with. We appreciate that. Our team, our neighborhood, our neighborhood team got together, larger neighborhood, and we've brought that down to a committee of seven. Our committee, some of the members here tonight. We got, we got together, we put together what we think are overall concepts that we want to discuss with the landscape architect. And then we've got a list of smaller ancillary improvements that we think might tie into some of these larger overall improvements, green space, et cetera. So basically, we've got in contact with John Rubel, the architect, yesterday, Friday, and then also followed up yesterday. And he will be out the next few weeks to visit the property itself and indicated that we will all get together with Chris Pollock, Pollock, of the town and the three groups, the town, the architect, and our committee will get together to further those ideas together as a team. So that's our update for this month. Again, thank you, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Fine, right. Okay, Mike Dumovic, 1833 Tulane. I have a question about the resolution you're proposing to pass today, 2133, as far as the minutes go. It says you're going to go with 20 minutes. Do you still have the option of extending it past that point? Because if you give, yeah, two minutes per person, you've basically limited everything. First 10 people get to speak. After that, you're out of luck. Second thing is, if I ask the question and get an answer from you, does the clock stop until you answer and then start again? Or does your answer kind of gets to my two minutes on the clock? Last thing, but as for something else, what the heck is play street violation? It's in your ordinance, 1959, it talks about a play street violation. And I'm just curious what that is. Nobody knows. Okay. So if you could answer the question again, is there a possibility of extending the 20 minutes past that time? Or is the 20 minutes a locked-in time? Anyone?
I'm gonna look at their attorney.
There's always discretion and copia.
Okay, but it's not stated in the ordinance. The ordinance says 20 minutes.
It is stated in the state law that the ordinance is drafted. It's, well, first off, it's a resolution, so it's a statement of policy. The policy's gonna be 20 minutes.
Okay.
But they have the ability, and the president has the ability, I think, and I don't have the resolution up in front of me, but it says that he can recognize other speakers on different topics. So he has the ability to go beyond 20 seconds.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Mike Wachala. I live at 7 Terrace Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for implementing the street closure on Terrace Drive. Closing the street is the best traffic calming strategy for us. Closing Terrace will also create more traffic flow on Ridge Road, which will help the businesses on Ridge. Children in our neighborhood will now have a safe place to play. They don't need to play on Ridge Road. Closing Terrace has actually given us our neighborhood back again. The speed limit on Ridge Road is 35 miles per hour. We routinely have vehicles driving much faster than that on Terrace. Currently, we actually have people driving over the parkways, onto the sidewalks to get around the barricades. This gives you an idea of how little people in general care about the safety of others. Our neighborhood is already noticeably quieter. There's less garbage being thrown on the streets, especially over the weekends. It makes for a very walkable, bikeable, family-safe place to spend time with your family on both sides of the state line. People on the Illinois side have agreed with the same thing as far as the traffic issues. Currently on Facebook, there are people encouraging ways to bypass Ridge Road. One comment was that to bypass Ridge, you can go past Ridge Road, turn into the parking lots by Munster Liquors, and drive over to get to Meadow. Ridiculous. Also, in the same fashion from this quote, it's from this post, it's saying, utilize all the networks of streets running parallel and perpendicular to Ridge from any direction. It's an attempt to make Terrace even more of an expressway. Please keep Terrace Drive closed. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Grow.
Oh, Jennifer, please. I gotta reset the timer. Sorry. Wanna make sure everybody gets their fair amount. You're good to go.
Jennifer Grow, 8339 North, I know most of you. I would like you to hear why I am supporting the opportunity to reimagine Ridge Road. I know about four or five years ago, I came to this room to give the town council, explain the recommendations, and to look at the architectural drawings. At that time, I was not sure change was needed. Since that time, I have studied more on the subject of urban renewal and now at, look at this as, look at this as an opportunity for our town, one, to find more tax monies through higher density building near the train station, condominiums, et cetera. Safety, too, because as many of you here know, trying to cross five lanes in traffic by foot or by car can be harrowing accidents. I've had one, and employees have accidents there. We have a train station that should be completed within the next year or so, and to have more livable, a more livable area will only increase our tax base in our community. I realize that the grant money we, the town of Munster, receive is extraordinary for a town our size, mostly because the design and the foresight that the plan showed are extraordinary. I understand that we will be getting a new governor and lieutenant governor this coming year, possibly the Republicans. And having read a few items that they would like to implement as far as what their concerns are, I believe that bringing younger families to Munster will be a boon. The plan that disturbs, disturbs me is that seniors and veterans will be getting a property break, tax break according to the plans that Ron and his lieutenant governor would like to enforce or bring to board. And yes, as a senior, I would love not having to pay taxes, but I also understand that we will, that will lower our funding during town. Okay.
Thank you.
May I continue or no?
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Jumping the gun.
Sorry.
Good evening. I'm Mitch Barloga, 1900 Bluebird Lane, Munster. I am here on behalf of the Love of Munster. Two weeks ago, we submitted this letter to you all. At this time, we have not received any response. Just as a reiteration, we are asking for a public forum to take place because we are pretty firm on our opinion that there are many people in this town who do support the Ridge Road project and probably even far more than don't support the Ridge Road project. Again, it went through a heavy amount of public comment back in the day. And when all of you were running for election, or most of you were running for election last year, you brought up some good points about concerns. You put that out in your election material about, we're not gonna reduce Ridge Road. But you only brought up one issue at the time, which is emergency access. That was addressed. Okay? And having your roadway go from five to three, okay? In our case, has been proven time and again to be the most prudent strategy going forward out there. Now, what you didn't run on was giving back the $17 million, which unfortunately might be one of the same if you keep a five-lane cross-section there. I think everyone in this room can say Ridge Road needs some improvements. And we're thinking that in this case, that is the point. So time isn't the essence. And for the Love of Munster is gonna move forward with our own public hearing. We're looking to do so next month, and we will welcome you to that event. Thank you.
Thank you.
My mouse isn't responding. I'm moving. It's just not too far. Okay, you're good to go.
Okay, Dawn Mario, 8546 Forest. When I moved to Munster many years ago, Terrace was closed at the state line. It's been open for quite a while now, and over the years, traffic has increased tremendously. Terrace is used as a cut-through from Wentworth to Forest to Timmerick. And Forest and Timmerick constantly have cars speeding excessively. Recently, Terrace was closed at the state line due to the construction. And I can honestly say, our neighborhood has been so peaceful and quiet due to the volume of cars that have been significantly reduced. We hardly had any traffic. We feel safer walking. My mom lives in Lansing, so yes, it would be a bit of an inconvenience if Terrace was closed, but that outweighs the safety of our neighborhood by far. Please keep Terrace closed, please.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Martha Borak. And I spoke last week about the chicanes on Azalea. And I'm asking, what are the eight chicanes being removed?
Can we get your address, please?
I'm sorry, 1008 Azalea.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm in near Columbia. One thing I wanted to bring up was the street light, the only street light between Columbia and Oreo has been removed. And so our street is, was dark before, it's very dark now. And that is hazardous with those chicanes being there, especially someone driving at night. The other thing, I do appreciate the speed bumps. They're down the street, they start at Oreo, so there really isn't anything from Columbia to Oreo. So something needs to be done there, but the chicanes need to go because people are still speeding through there. You know, they don't slow down that much. People are braver than you think. And of course, the problem with the snow. And when we have the trash people come through, they have expressed concerns about the chicanes, making it more difficult to pick up certain people's trash. Also, those chicanes, the four that are there, take up eight parking spots, which people need. And as Dave pointed out, that he is missing three. So anyway, I hope you will consider if you could have a meeting and try to get rid of those things. And I'd like, for the people here that are representing Azalea, would you please raise your hands? Thank you so much for coming, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward here in the open to the public session?
No.
Hi, Sarah Hirsch.
Just a second, Sarah, please. You caught me off guard, and I switched my screen and my paper. Sorry. All right, you're good to go, Sarah.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Sarah Hirsch. I don't have any formal remarks.
Trust.
Oh, 247 and 303 Beverly Place, we don't vote. I moved to Munster eight years ago. I was pregnant with our first, or I'm sorry, our second, when we did so. And I didn't think to ask, does Munster have a downtown? Until we moved here, and we do not really. We have Ridge Road, and we live on Beverly, and we love Ridge. I walk it daily with my dog. We access the Sweet Tooth, we access Michiganut, the comic book store over there. We love Ridge. It's not very safe, and it's not very attractive, and it doesn't do the businesses on Ridge justice. And I also work with federal granters, and I know that if we give back $17 million, we're never gonna get that back. And not only that, we're never gonna get another federal again. So I please ask you, don't make that decision, and instead invest in Munster for the future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? Anyone else like to come forward to the open to the public? Being done, I would close the open to the public session. That takes us up to the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments? Thing done.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
Five zero.
It takes us up to the old business. And we have ordinances here A, B, C, and D that we had first reading on at our last meeting. And this will be the second reading, and these are putting in the ordinances that we had. You didn't get to do your report, I'm sorry.
The electronics, yes, on the public comment. Would you like me to do it now, or would you like to do it after old business? Because I do have a lot. I do have a lot.
Then why don't we do it after old business?
All right, let's finish up with old business and we'll circle back. Go ahead.
So ordinances 1956, 1957, 1958, and 1959 are all clarifying some language, some issues that were discovered when we were trying to implement the town code that was previously adopted. So council has to adopt these four ordinances now on second reading.
And we can do this all in one motion?
If you do it the way it's written in the recommendation. But we're sure that we're distinctly calling out each court.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1956, and ordinance 1957, and ordinance 1958, and ordinance 1959 as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do any further comments?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. Dumovic, did I get that right? Yeah. Ask a question about play streets, and just for everyone's edification, in the ordinance that is now before you for adoption, it references the fine for violation of a play street, but it also references you back to section 54 104, which is the definition of a play street, which in layman's terms, and I haven't seen this in the last nine and a half years, the town, either through the council, the traffic engineer, or in our case, the traffic engineer, if we don't have a formal one, could be the town manager, can either permanently or temporarily essentially close a street for play. And then you would be prohibited from driving on that street unless you had a resident there. And it's all in section 54 104. And I apologize, I didn't have that answer off the top of my head when you asked the question, but that's a fairly lengthy ordinance, and I had a first bind in the section he was talking about. So, but that's your, that's what applies you.
Very good.
Thank you very much. Scott learned. We just got learned. I was confused, too. I was looking for it myself.
So you don't say game on or game off?
But you gotta go from one to the other.
Any other questions, comments? Thing done, please call the room.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. It takes us up to...
Well, let's go back to the, yes, the electronic comments that were submitted. We had 26 people, 26 emails in support of the Reimagine Ridge Road project. We had two emails that were supportive of the Beverly Parkway. We had three emails that said they did not like the chicanes on Azalea. We had five emails saying, close Terrace permanently. One email saying, change, empty the trash cans in Bluebird Park more frequently. One email saying, don't buy the CBPA. We had one email encouraging more public comments at the town council meetings. One email struck, bringing to our attention the street light that's out on Azalea, so what Sora has shared. We had five people that like four lanes on Ridge Road. One person that liked the traffic calming that's going on on South Forest. Three people wanted to encourage a public forum on the Reimagine Ridge Road project. One person that had concerns about the construction on Fran Lynn and the impact that it's having on Chestnut, that was recently had construction. And then one additional question on the ordinance that was just passed on, ordinance 1958, are e-bikes, e-scooters, and mini-bikes allowed? And then what's improper use of the bike path?
Thank you.
Those, yeah, those are just a recap of the comments that we've received in the past two weeks.
Okay, going forward, could we have duplicates from residents on the same subject matter?
We do get duplicates, but they're sent, but they're sent on different days and different times. I have talked to the public access councillor about that issue, and he said, there are different times, different dates.
Different comment.
Different comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've asked about it, and it's on both sides.
Yo.
Yeah, so.
All right.
So now we're on new business.
On new business. It takes us up to the resolution 2134, meeting conduct.
So there is a new statute that is going to affect, I think, today, which allows council to adopt ordinance regarding various meeting rules and conduct that can be permitted. And I believe that, now I'm trying to block them, have some comments.
So, I think you guys are all aware, under the open door law, there's no right, although it's been historical practice, there's no right under the law for public comment. Now, historically, most, not all, town councils, governing bodies have a public comment section, but that is out of practice, not the law. The law says that residents have the right to observe and report public meetings, and that if they're given the right to comment. There really hasn't been a lot of guidance until this term of the legislative body, right? Like, so this, this term, and the law that goes into effect today is 514 1.533. And it says that if you are gonna allow attendees to speak on a topic at a meeting, you can designate. So what the state legislature did and the governor did was that they said, all right, since it is a historical practice, and since most communities allow public comment, here are some guidelines that you may adopt to kind of guide you through the process. You can designate, under this law, the period of time for taking public comment, the amount of time for each public comment, and adopt reasonable rules or policies governing to kind of get the meeting. Uh, and adopt reasonable rules or policies governing to kind of get the meeting, uh, which include time restrictions, steps to maintain order. There's kind of a free strike policy on inappropriate comments. And I, I would just say that the statute that was passed is consistent with what you read at the beginning of all your public meetings, which is, is basically, the state has now made the law, well, what we've been doing in my entire time here, which is, you know, there's a time period for, we ask that comments be civil and constructive, things like that. And so what the law says is that if you're gonna try to implement those rules, then you need to pass a resolution to that effect. And then those rules need to be published by, at the door. So like where we have our, our notices out right by the door there. Um, and the only thing I think that's added to the resolution that we don't already do, and this is really out of a courtesy to Wendy who's trying to take everyone's name and address, especially if they're talking while they're trying to get on with that to get their, their full two minutes. Um, there's a sign-in sheet as part of the resolution. So the resolution says they're gonna state their name and address, but they've gotta sign their name and address so that Wendy is not left to try to go back and decipher a tape if she doesn't get it right. Other than that, everything that's in that resolution is consistent with what you read at the beginning of your.
Beautiful. Alright.
I'll make that motion to adopt resolution twenty-one thirty-four as presented.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. I've asked Counselor Hopper to read this resolution.
Alright. Town of Munster, Lake County, Indiana, resolution number twenty-one thirty-four. The resolution, the resolution of the town council of the town of Munster, Indiana, adopting and establishing rules and policies for participation in public meetings for all governing bodies of the town of Munster. Whereas the town council of the town of Munster, Indiana, is duly elected, the duly elected legislative body of the town of Munster, Lake County, Indiana, here and after the town, in quote, a unit of local government and is responsible for establishing policies and procedures for the town. And whereas the state of Indiana has recently adopted IC five dash fourteen dash one point five dash three point three entitled Public Participation in Governing Party Meeting. Adopting reasonable rules and policies, removal of attendees, which is effective July first, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the town council deems it in the best interest of the town to set forth the uniform policy procedure and guidelines with regard to public participation in meetings and adopt reasonable rules and policies. And whereas the town council deems it in the best interest of the town to set forth uniform rules and policies with regard to the conduct of public meetings. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town council establishes the following rules and policies with respect to all public meetings for the town. Number one, comments and from members of the public attending the meeting in person shall be taken at the beginning of public meetings prior to the governing body of that meeting taking a final action on any topic. Comments from members of the public attending the meeting virtually via Zoom or other media shall not be allowed. Number two, public comments shall be limited to two minutes per attendee. Number three, the total time allotted for public comments shall be twenty minutes. Number four, all public comments must be civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. Number five, all members of the public commenting at a meeting must physically sign the public speaker's sign-in form and provide their name and address. Speakers will also be required to orally prove their name and address prior to commenting. Number six, the president or chairman, chairperson of the cover, governing body may, in his or her discretion, ask or recognize speakers with different points of view to speak at the meeting. Number seven, an attendee who disrupts a meeting will be issued a warning from the president or chairperson of the governing body. After an attendee receives three warnings, the president or chairperson may, upon issuance of the third warning, direct the attendee to leave the meeting. If the attendee refuses to leave the meeting when directed, the president or chairperson may direct a law enforcement officer to remove the attendee from the meeting. Number eight, a law enforcement officer may immediately remove an attendee from the meeting if, A, removal of the attendee is necessary to maintain order or ensure safety of those attending the meeting. B, the attendee commits a criminal offense. Or C, the attendee violates the rules or policies governing the conduct of the meeting as adopted by the town. And then number nine, the rules adopted by the town council as a part of this resolution shall be posted at the entrance of the public meeting locations.
Any further questions, comments?
I, my, my question, I guess, is regarding the, the twenty minutes time limit. Um, if we're, uh, if, I'm just thinking about the process with this. I think it would help be helpful if, at the beginning, before the meeting starts, if we would have people sign in with their, with their names and addresses. What I'm concerned with is twenty minutes, if we have, you know, say thirty people wanna talk, then maybe, and and they all sign up beforehand. I, I think we need to have some, some acknowledgement that we're not gonna hear at least speak. Again, thirty, thirty people's an exaggeration. Just say, let's say there's twelve people. Maybe we can either say, hey, everybody gets a minute forty-five today, or we're gonna take the extra two people for the extra two minutes. I guess I'm just, in, in our original thing that we read this morning, or this earlier in the meeting, said we have the ex- exercise its discretion allowing public comment to extend past twenty minutes, but not required to do so. I, I guess I just, at, at least if we would put that in there, but right now we've taken that out. And I guess I'd like to have the discretion to have additional public input. I don't, I don't really like closing down public comment. Um, I do understand we don't wanna go on here, you know, for sixty minutes. But at the same time, I guess I mean, I'm, I'm saying two things. One, I'd like to be able to have the ability to extend it. That's my one comment. The second comment would be more policy or procedure-wise. If we know how many people are gonna speak beforehand, then we can at least section off the amount of time that we have. You know, if we only know there's gonna be twenty-four people, or twelve people speaking, who cares if there's an extra two people speaking? If there's thirty people speaking, then we wanna know, it sounds like in, in number six, that's when we're gonna be looking at. If there's thirty people here speaking, we might wanna divide, if there's six people for this topic, six people against this topic. We don't wanna, we wanna have a, a, a good overall view of everybody that's here to speak. And we don't want the first ten people speaking on one topic and the other twenty people not having any topic to speak on. So I guess it's a little bit of a policy dis- or procedural. How do we make sure that we get a fair representation of everybody here to speak?
Counselor, why wasn't this brought up last Wednesday at the agenda meeting when we all went over this and we are all fine with it?
Well, because I, I started thinking about, yeah, I was at the meeting, the agenda review meeting on Wednesday night. And this was brought to me, we, we looked it over. I think in policy, it's really good. And I'm not saying anything in here is wrong. I guess what I'm concerned with is, one, allowing a fair representation of people here. And if we just add the, these, the additional step of having people sign in beforehand with their name, address, and topic, then our president or council can look at that at the start of the meeting, make sure that we have a fair representation of everybody that's gonna speak.
Well, aren't they gonna sign up when they go to the podium? We're not gonna have them sign right when they walk in.
Yeah.
My, I guess my suggestion would be having them sign up when they first get here would allow us then at seven o'clock to see who is speaking. If there's gonna be twelve people, we don't care what they speak about. If there's twenty people, now we might wanna say, guess what, we want four people speaking about this topic, four on this topic. And, and the one person that wants to speak about something else, at least we get them talking. They're not the last person we say no to. And again, I, I do apologize for not bringing up on Wednesday, because again, that is what the agenda review meeting is for. However, this was just kind of given to us on Wednesday night and I wasn't thinking about this, had a, a, I, I think a procedural issue. It's not policy. I think I'm again, why we're doing this. I support the resolution. I just think it's fair to add a little bit extra to it.
I think our attorney has some comments. So ninety-eight percent of what Mr. Gardner just said is a, a pure policy call for the five of you, right?
The one thing that he said that um, I would just caution, on the sign-in sheet, um, you really don't wanna be in a position where you're having people list topics, because now you're picking and choosing what the public comment is. And so that's, you get into some kind of First Amendment issue there. I don't, I, I would hate to see you try to make determinations on who gets to speak based on the topic. The other stuff, with that caveat, right? The other stuff is you're free, under the law, to do whatever the, you know, the majority of you would like to do. So, uh, I, I just wanted to bring up that point about that's, I, I don't want people to list their topics ahead of time. Or I would advise against that, because I think you can get into a pretty murky area.
Mr. President, I'd like to offer scribbler's correction in resolutions before us, please. Uh, Ms. Westland, I direct your attention bottom page one, it's section five, second sentence. Speakers will also be required to orally prove their name and address prior to commenting. Uh, if Mrs. York, my English teacher here, she would advise us that that's a split infinitive. Perhaps speakers will also be required to have orally proved their name and address prior to comment. I suggest that we in that certain have between the word to and orally.
I don't think the intent was a proof. I think it's missing. I think the word proved is missing a couple of letters. It should be orally provide. So at least what we talked about on Monday was, they were gonna sign in their, their name and address, and they were gonna say their name and address. That way, when it's, it's, so, I mean.
Perhaps then the changes where proved to be changed to provide.
That's correct.
With that change, um, I'm prepared to move the motion.
I'll second that.
I'm prepared with the resolution subject to that change.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion questions? I guess I would like, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say so. To um, say about the public comment and the twenty minute totals, isn't it, this is a resolution, but is it gonna be something to where you can make a, a, game time decision, say, hey, we got two more people, we're good, or is it done so?
I think it's covered by number six, that the president or chairperson, if it's, if their discretion um, may recognize speakers who contribute to the meeting. So I think, you know, that was kind of the, the question that Mr. Dumapay. That. That's the question he had. And, and so, I mean, that's kind of what that number six has kind of designed.
And I think that, I, when I read it over this afternoon, I meant, I took that to mean speak at the meeting during the, during this meeting, per se, not the public comment section. But that is speaking at the public comment section. Okay, yes, okay.
This whole, um, resolution pertains to the open of the public session.
Right.
And one of the comments that we had or questions, because of this, and it'll be posted, we were looking to reduce the amount of verbiage that we read in the meeting.
So assuming the resolution passes, um, you post those rules at the door?
Mm-hmm.
And you wouldn't necessarily need to have those as the first, you know, quarter page of your agenda.
I, I, I guess the only other thing I would say, in, in response to uh, Mike's comment, served you about a question. Questions to the council during public input sessions are, anybody can say anything they want. I think the best question that can happen, though, if you have questions about anything in the agenda, is to send that to the council beforehand, so our staff can re- review some of those questions, and then we can have answers for you. A lot of times, um, questions that are asked during the public comment section, uh, sometimes uh, are needed to be answered by staff members. And I think it's best if, if they have it. So if anybody does have questions about anything in the agenda, I think it is best to send an email or, or ask the council before the meeting, so we can ask the count, uh, staff, and then they can answer the questions.
Mr. President, I think Mr. Gardner's comments are well-taken.
Well, it certainly helps to have a, a heads up as to what the question might be, so that it can be answered accurately and early. So with that, um, we call for the question?
Call for a vote.
Call for the vote.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to North Cot Avenue Traffic Calming.
Council has discussed this and tabled the matter, um, until they had time to perform some other review. The the recommendation to award the contract to site services for twenty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars and fifty cents due from speed humps along North Cot.
Council President, I'd like to make that motion to approve site services incorporated for a total cost of twenty-nine nine hundred and fifty cents for the North Cot traffic calming bid awarded as recommended by S C H.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Further discussion, comments?
Mr. President, I, I am, after having studied this motion, um, I have some concerns about this. One of the things that caused us to table the motion at the last council meeting was a concern about neighborhood buy-in. And in fact, we heard and we saw by showing of hands, significant presence from the folks on Zella, Azalea. And their surprise at having had these chicanes and other traffic obstacles installed on their street. And we discussed having a survey. And the more I have considered what was provided, the more I am troubled by this. My understanding is, is we sent uh, a member of the police department out to, quote, knock on doors. I'm, I don't see a copy of the results of this effort in the memo or attached to any of this, any of these documents. I'm unsure about what the mechanism was. It was expressed to me today by a resident, their concern that, hey, if there's a police officer that shows up at your door and wants you to say something, you may be inclined to do that just to get him out of your front doorstep. Um, I think before we start moving forward with installing barriers, humps, obstacles, chicanes, or other things in the roadways here in Munster, I think there needs to be a much more thorough process. This seems to be much more of an hot process where it pops up. I am, I am unsure of the integrity of this so-called survey that occurred. Uh, well, there has been conversations about North Cot, where we have discussed possibly closing it at Ham. And we heard comments from people today about terrorists, where they have found closing terrorists has measurably improved the quality of their neighborhoods. What I'm concerned about is the following. We should be focused not on traffic calming, which I think is a euphemism for the installation of barriers and roadways. We should be focused on road safety. And there's many more mechanisms that engage the concept of road safety than installing barriers and humps and other things in roadways. Things such as hiring additional police officers, things such as radar protection. And, and mechanisms to ensure that when we are doing things in neighborhoods, we actually have scientifically validatable evidence that the neighbors are actually in favor of this. And I'm not sure that we've developed those kinds of mechanisms. So as, as a result, I, I think, I think this is the start of a process and the council has the opportunity to do it right. And we can do it right by developing tools and diagnostics to ensure that when we do, if we do things like this, it is ultimately based on traffic counts, it is ultimately based on safety, it is ultimately based on what's best for the community. And I think we're not there yet. So under the circumstances, I'm gonna make a motion to table this for further consideration by the council, with the goal that we develop those diagnostics. And then, if after we develop those diagnostics, it's shown that this is the best approach, I'll be prepared to vote for it. But right now, I don't think I can. So I'm gonna make a motion to table this matter at this time for the council to consider it further.
We have support.
I'd like to chime in on this. We were speaking about this at Wednesday's meeting and um, actually, there was how many people um, took in favor of the survey. We only had a few, a few against. Actually, I have some friends that live on North Cot. They came up to me and said how um, a member of V I P.
a member of V I P came up and asked about the survey, and they were, you know, in favor of slowing down traffic on Northcott Avenue, and they were happy that somebody from the town came in and approached and asked for their opinions. It wasn't like sticking something in their face, it was, um, what's your concerns, um, uh, what would you like to see? And the majority of the people that we spoke about at our agenda meeting were in favor of Northcott. I, I think it even went back to, um, a couple of years ago with Steve, with Chief Shekel, you know, making a recommendation that these people are looking for some type of, uh, traffic calming on that street. So I am in favor of this.
And is the motion to table, then there's no second for that?
No, correct.
Oh, no.
There's
I'm just asking the
There's a, we have a, we have a motion for, and a second. And we're in conversation right now.
So the motion table has died for lack of a second.
Yes.
Okay. But, but, Mr. President, I'm just Again, I think the, the, uh, the speed humps here are, are, uh, having discussed for some time, especially with our staff. And I think to the point where I think they were even promised by staff last year, and I think it was more than just, you know, former staff members. Um, I, I support this. I think these are, can be, uh, good use of uh, traffic calming. Certainly, police presence trumps everything. However, our police cannot be everywhere. And, uh, these traffic calming devices, um, at this amount of money that they're out there year-round, one twenty-four hours a day, I think is a, is a good use, and a good, uh, use of money.
And what I did like about that meeting, having S C H over there, um, speaking about, well, one of the engineers, nineteen-year resident over here, just mentioning that the, uh, best traffic calming would be speed bumps, uh, rubberized, uh, cushion bumps or, um, raised crosswalks. He says chicanes are, are overkill for any street that's twenty-five miles per hour or lower, which are ninety percent of our streets. So I think going forward, I think that really helps us with public, you know, traffic calming.
I think, I think it's a good start. And I, I, nobody wants to turn this place into a, a speed bump or a chicane farm. Hopefully, the chicanes are in the rearview mirror. But, uh, nobody wants us to turn into a speed bump farm, but it's a good start, and it's as far as the police controlling and in, in making the effort to be seen, uh, the, again, that's, uh, one of the, the best effective ways. Um, but I, I don't, you know, with the people on Northcott and how that's gonna affect people shooting off the feeder streets, and, you know, that's all, everybody knows how, how that works. But I mean, it's a start, and, and, you know, it's, it's one of these things that we just gotta get a, uh, ahead of it, and, uh, the effective as we can.
Any other comments? I would like to make a comment that I support what councillor Peterson is saying. We do need to do our homework. We do need to make sure that we have studied what's going on. We need to make sure that the residents are aware of it. I do believe that Northcott has been vetted. We did have folks, uh, go and talk to people, talk to the residents, and make this determination, and probably the speed bumps are the most benign thing that we can do that it doesn't impact parking, and it does give an opportunity to slow cars down. But again, I do support the fact that we need to really make sure that what we're doing is the right thing for the particular spot or neighborhood. So, um, but I do support this because I think this project has been vetted, but future ones, we definitely need to make sure that we always have the residents involved with it and know where we stand on the opinions of what they think. Please call the vote.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
I vote present.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. All right. That, uh, takes us up to reports. Does anyone have any reports to bring up?
I have a portfolio when you're ready.
And then, no reports?
I have a portfolio.
That takes us to portfolio reports.
That's me. Um, on June twentieth, I was at the, uh, NERC meeting, and, um, the committee that I'm the chairperson of, which is the Personnel and Finance Committee, we passed a resolution that then went on to the full executive board. And that was a resolution to, that was submitted to, um, State Board of Accounts. And what we did is we asked them for a detailed invoice of what they're charging all government units for. And it also asked for, um, the state to assist the government unions, um, in covering the cost of audits. And then, um, I was at a conference last week for clerk treasurers, and we, I shared the information that we're going to bring that resolution to the legislature, and there was su- support at that league of clerk treasurers, so they were very excited about that. Um, we also talked about, uh, we also in that committee or that committee, we talked about the road safety audit. Um, that's something that all local units should have submitted information to. And finally, uh, in the fall of this year, we'll be funding future projects, so we, as a municipality, should be thinking of what projects we need to be submitting to NERC or funding in future years. So your thinking camps on.
All right. Any other portfolio reports? Announcements, all town council meetings will begin at seven P M. unless otherwise noted. The, uh, July fifteenth is the next regular town council meeting and regular redevelopment commission. With that, I'm looking for the German motion. We have a second.
Sir.
Joe seconded.
I second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right. We concluded this meeting, and we have a following meeting with the redevelopment commission.
Castro, how do you do?
Hello, everyone.
All right. I'd like to go ahead and, uh, start the redevelopment commission meeting, regular meeting, um, follow the roll.
Sure. If we can have your attention, please, we just one minute or one meeting following. Thank you. Commissioner Schinkin.
Here.
Commissioner Hopper.
Here.
Commissioner Gardner.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Nellens.
Here.
School board liaison, commissioner. Yes, well.
Present.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
This meeting also has an open to the public session. I, has the same comments and restrictions, uh, time allowance as we have in the regular meeting. If there's anyone that'll open up in the open to the public, comment here for the redevelopment commission. Anyone like to come forward and speak at the re- regarding redevelopment commission items? The open to the public is now for the redevelopment commission. Anyone like to come forward? I'll ask one more time, is there anyone like to come forwards for the redevelopment commission, open to the public? Seeing that, I'll close the open to the public. That takes us to consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
The motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Schinkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens.
Yes. We have no old business, no new business, no reports, and no announcements. That takes us up to adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Seven, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hit the phone, same signs. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming and attending. We appreciate that.
John, everything going good?